Call this meeting, the City Council Committee of the whole order. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Brown.
Here.
Colbrook.
Here.
Hershey.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Okay, first up is approval of the minutes from April 20th. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve them.
I'll second them.
Moved by Dennis and seconded by Mary Alice. Any corrections?
I didn't move it. I didn't have.
Bill Colbrook did.
Moved by Bill Colbrook and seconded by Mary Alice. Are there any corrections? Now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say that motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? And then it's public input. Charlie, do you have some you want to read first?
Yeah, there are quite a few here. Let me start with Scott Dossett. Well, let me start with Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Underwood. They're continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. And next up is Scott Dossett. Hello, writing to opine about this townhouse project, referring the article on page A10 of Sunday, May 3, 2020 News Gazette. I hope you will take your time and carefully evaluate the proposed extension amendment. No reason to rush this. It seems that Green Street Realty's modus operandi is to wait until the wait till the last minute, then try to rush the city. At some point in time, I, as a resident of Urbana, start to feel game. So some questions. Why were their engineers not able to make a realistic evaluation of the utility workaround needed? The site was totally exposed because we paid for it to be so. The city put 1.5 million into this lot they got for free. What else might be misengineered on the project? For example, why, even though https://illinois.us/2000vine redevelopment shows otherwise, it is the east side of the development several feet higher than the pavement. The projection of the east part of this building over the east side of Urbana Street is going to be profound. How was the resulting change to the local hydrology factored into the design? I wouldn't want to own one of the two houses remaining on the 200 block of South Urbana. Will another design review be undertaken? As you recall, the exterior treatments, as shown in the doc noted above, came after a lot of public input about the shabby first design. Now, right out of the box, the developer wants to have a new type of siding that Saunders said will save money. Isn't most of the facade to be brick? What type of siding will be used? My overriding concern is that we back that we are back to campus housing quality materials, not materials and design which accompany our federal and county courthouse, not the quality of construction for our downtown. If this variance is given, what does the city get? Can the reimbursement of property taxes be reconsidered? What stick can the city provide to be certain this just doesn't get kicked down the road? Or are we going to find six months from now, after six months of relative inactivity, mirroring the last six months of inactivity, that we are where we are right now? When do we stop leaning into the Green Street deal? Again, please don't rush this. Make Green Street bring new plans to council for the property and open them up to public comment. Thanks, Scott Dossett. Okay, scrolling up. Next is Karen Linder. I was disheartened and angry to witness the cops-like show that the Urbana Police put on last week's City Council meeting. It was horrifying to watch the way they portrayed Ms. Lewis as a criminal for over an hour, even though it was the police officer who first approached her, then aggressively came at her to handcuff her. Her hands were always clearly visible, showing no weapons, and she had even turned to leave the scene before the officer began walking toward her. Not once during this show did the Urbana Police address the issue of race, nor address the possibility that an officer had made a mistake. We cannot move beyond a racial judicial system until we have a police force willing to talk about the inherent racial bias within its department. I demand all charges against Ms. Lewis be dropped. I further demand the civilian police review board be brought into thoroughly investigate the conduct the Urbana Police officers used in their dealings with Ms. Lewis. Let's all move in the right direction together. Thank you, Karen Linder. Next is Jeffrey Putney, who lives in Champaign. I write with regard to the UPD presentation to the City Council on April 27. Upon watching the entire presentation and council meeting, I'm sad to say I believe the police chief used his public platform to obscure and erase a community member's experience of racialized police violence. He went to great lengths to gaslight the public and tell us how we should interpret what we were seeing in the videos. But what he failed to do, and what we should expect anyone charged with public well-being to do, is take the time to understand how the community viewed the incident. He should have listened to the concerns of the community and the victim, and used his time in front of the council to show an understanding of the issues at hand. To highlight the disconnect, let me share some of what concerned me in those videos. In the videos, I heard the racist anger of the officer as he mocked the victim with her own vernacular before assaulting her. In the video, I heard the misogyny of an officer as he tells a woman who had just been punched in need that she needs to act like a lady. In the video, I heard an officer yell, "I will shoot you", and then I heard the first thing the victim said in response, "Do you have your body cam on?" A chilling reply that highlights a terrifying awareness, even in a moment of crisis, of how racialized police violence functions in our country. I also saw footage from the victim in jail, footage of an innocent woman used without her consent to 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 help condemn her in the face of the public. But in the police chief's narrative, all of this and more was erased. I'm left with no choice but to believe he fundamentally does not understand these issues, and I work and I would ask the mayor and city council to ask for his resignation. I would also like to address part of the city council's response to the police chief last week. I found the way in which domestic violence has been discussed with regard to this case very troubling. I would like to suggest to council members that the legitimacy of anyone's domestic violence experience never depends on whether a person feels safe involving police. And only the survivor of violence gets to choose how they identify their experience. All we know in this case is that there were potential signs of domestic violence, and that should be enough for us to treat any potential survivor with the care and support that everyone deserves. Thank you again for your time. Next is Jacqueline Hannah, and I'm an Urbana resident. I'm absolutely appalled by what I witnessed in the video of April 27 City Council meeting. It seems there is a basic lack of understanding of what domestic violence is both on our city council and our police department, which is utterly unacceptable. On April 10, the victim was threatened with a gun, and that was then that with a gun that was then discharged. She was threatened by a domestic partner with grievous bodily harm. There is no question this was domestic violence. Threats to hit, injure, or use a weapon are a form of serious psychological abuse. Being threatened with a gun by someone who is arguing with you, who is enraged, is severely traumatic and is abuse legally. On April 27, the police chief was allowed to present a one-sided case with no questions or response, and to make it seem as if the attack on this victim of domestic violence who needed aid was somehow justified. Conveniently, not only was no one allowed to ask questions or rebuttal, but also the fact that the victim was tased for questioning, not resisting, but questioning, being put in a cell with others demonstratably shows signs of disease when she was supposed to be quarantined for 14 days, a standard procedure to protect her and those around her for COVID-19, which can be a death sentence. The police, the police's own body cam footage showed them mocking the victim in the jail, telling her she was beaten and arrested by them because she did not act like a lady. Let that sink in, because she did not act like a lady. A domestic violence victim looking for help was physically abused and beaten by police officers, tased for questioning a dangerous break with procedures that could put her life in jeopardy, and told she just acted like a lady, none of this would have happened to her. Our police chief has defended all of this. Our mayor has defended the actions of the police. Our state's attorney says she says she sees nothing at all wrong with what happened. So what these leaders are telling us is that this is business as usual in Urbana. This should not be business as usual in Urbana. This should never be business as usual in Urbana. All charges must be dropped against the victim immediately so that she may begin her healing, begin her healing process from this nightmare. But clearly, that is not enough. If this is what our leaders deem acceptable, if this is their idea of business as usual, we need for our city to conduct a full independent investigation of this police misconduct, and for the results to be shared publicly with all. We must go further than that to make sure this is never again business as usual in Urbana. The civilian police review board must be given teeth. It must be redesigned to be able to accept complaints from any witness, to have subpoena power, and to have the power to take action based on its findings. Because this must never again be business as usual in Urbana, and our elected leaders need to step up now to prove it will not be going forward. Okay, I've got I've got four people with the same email, the same contents, from Chelsea Burchenmeyer, Danielle Dawson, Andy Lee Quarabath, and Griffin Quazabar. It says, Dear City Council Members, I am writing as a concerned member of the Champaign-Urbana community to speak out against an incident of police brutality by the Urbana Police Department that occurred on April 10, a violent incident on April 15 that occurred in the jail, and one-sided presentation by the police chief at the City Council meeting on April 27. I am outraged that a community member who appears to have been threatened by a gun in her home was assaulted by the people who should be protecting her. She became a target of police violence when officers repeatedly escalated the situation during their investigation despite multiple opportunities to de-escalate. After she was arrested, officers of the jail victimized this community member further by using a taser against her while attempting to move her into a cell with people showing COVID-19 symptoms and noncompliance with the sheriff's policies. In the UPD's presentation to the City Council, they denied wrongdoing and erased the citizen's experience of traumatic violence at the hands of the police. In a city characterized by major racial disparities and arrests, these acts of disproportionate violence constitute acts of racial discrimination. In the body cam footage, the officers mocked the citizen and told her she was being attacked because she failed to behave like a lady. The police and some council members made comments indicating a failure to recognize research-based understanding of what constitutes domestic violence. This indicates that these were also acts of gender discrimination. Finally, these acts were a violation of human rights, and in the face of a pandemic, a violation of public health. The government will now enact further violence against a community member through the prison system if the city does not intervene to stop her prosecution. So far, the response from the City Council, mayor, and police chief has only served to do further harm to the victim. The City Council must take action to prevent further harm to this community member. As a concerned citizen, I ask that you take the following actions. One, the city must call for dropping all charges against the victim of police brutality immediately. The city must hold a full independent investigation of police misconduct with public disclosure of all findings. The county must hold an independent investigation of her assault by officers with a taser in the jail. The officers involved must be put on administrative leave. The police chief must resign, given his failure to respond to this appropriately. The police, the civilian police, the civilian review board must be redesigned to be a meaningful and useful process that allows any witness to submit a complaint, has subpoena power, and has disciplinary power to take action on its findings. Again, there were four people that submitted that. Okay, Danny Otto. Urbana, Illinois, says, I was formerly a member of the Urbana Plan Commission. I have been in a position to review developers' pleas to modify requirements due to financial stress, but when pushed by the public in the Plan Commission, were able to revise their plans and meet city guidelines. I want to sign on to Scott Dossett's letter copied below as reflecting my own views on Green Street Realty's request for a modification of materials and timeline. I think this requires more information than a public hearing, which allows for citizen input. We got to grab a drink.
If you want.
Linecaster.
Somebody with.
To the Urbana City Council. In the weeks leading up to last Monday's special meeting, citizens of Urbana were told that we should refrain from judging events surrounding the Aleah Lewis case until all facts were in. Last week, more evidence was presented, and none of it contradicted the two important facts we already knew. A, Ms. Lewis was a victim of police violence, and B, a nonviolent resolution was available. The Urbana City Council should reflect on its role in perpetuating this violence by asking a few important questions. Why did the chief of police narrate the proceedings? Isn't it all but certain that such a narration would present a version of the story that led to the exoneration of police officers? What training does the City Council have in evaluating evidence of potential police misconduct? Wouldn't any credible investigation include an expert third party with no links to the police or the state's attorney? Why was Ms. Lewis's version of events not part of the investigation? Wouldn't her participation be essential to any true investigation of the matter? The Urbana City Council did not act as representatives of the people, but as managers defraying liability due to incompetent performance. As with any internal investigation of this sort, the conclusion was written first, and the facts were arranged and interpreted to fit that conclusion. Every police officer received a clear message from the false investigation. The system of oversight for Urbana Police is virtually absent. Police officers have the option to use force or de-escalate now, have the blessings of the City Council to use violence. More than ever, the citizens of Urbana must demand the charges against Aleah Lewis be dropped and a formal apology issued by the city. Maria Zoe, to Urbana City Council and Urbana Community. Please take action to protect the April 10 victim of police brutality from legal charges and to bring justice to the officers involved in her harm. Current national patterns of police violence against the African-American community are unconscionable, and Urbana has a choice. Where will we stand when one of our own is brutalized by powerful men wearing uniforms? Will we continue national historic patterns of police violence, affirming the right of those in power to harm those with whom they interact? Urbana can be different. Please act to break the trend of justifying police brutality at the expense of our most vulnerable citizens. Next is Elizabeth Simpson.
To whom it may concern, I am writing as a conflict resolution professional who has been involved in de-escalation for 20 years, and of which we're at Urbana Middle School. I've been involved directly and as an advisor in all sorts of fights and disputes involving police, citizens, students, guns, and other weapons, bullying among youth and among adults, which we call threats, coercion, and assault, and in all sorts of dynamics of sexism and racism. In my experience, one of the most difficult things to do is to get people to stop taking sides and instead to seek solutions that can only come from listening. I'm writing to you as council members because you are in the middle of a historic moment in which you have an opportunity to change a harmful pattern that has been alive and well in our community for decades, a pattern that has been researched and documented and ignored. I'm writing to let you know that your actions to date in response to the April 10 incident with UPD is sending a very clear message to all citizens, and particularly to African-Americans, and specifically to black children. The message you are sending says, "The police will hurt you if they want to, regardless of what you do, or even whether or not you have actually done anything. And when they do, the press will cover for them, and the city council and mayor will not stand up for you. In fact, they will say the officer was right to take the actions that hurt you, and that is right that you, not the officer, be charged with a crime." The message you are sending says that if we are in trouble, we should not call the police because it might mean that we or our neighbors will be attacked. It dictates that our primary action to the police will be fear, and that reacting in fear is also a reason to be attacked. You're saying that above all, you're not willing to listen or take your right-sized part in this community matter, and that we will face this threat alone. I know how hard it is to follow a path of dignity and ethics when things are complicated. I'm not asking you to take sides between anyone involved. I'm asking you to take your side, the side of our elected representatives, whose role it is to advocate for our well-being, not cover for those who hurt us. Be thoughtful, be caring, be a reasonable person who sees that this woman should not be charged with crimes when she was not the one to instigate a physical attack, but was sat on by four minutes by a man with an assault rifle. We are looking to you for visionary leadership. Please do not drag us through the mud any longer. I stand in waiting to applaud your courage.
Next is Jane McClintock.
Dear council members and mayor, there are so many things I'm concerned about related to last week's City Council meeting that is difficult to know where to begin. I will start with a few questions I hope the city can look into and provide answers for. Has the city investigated the allegation that police went to Gregory Huggers' home and asked him to take down the video posted of the incident? Why did police inform a council member that the sheriff's department did not use a taser on the victim while she was in jail? Based on the sheriff department's incident report, we know they tased her twice, the first time without verbal warnings in violation of their own policy. Has the police department provided any proof that Officer Savantes broke his thumb? If not, could the city please request this and provide it to the public for clarity? Does the city or chief of police have a response to the most recent bystander video that has surfaced, including the new allegation that bystanders suggested the police were acting racist, and the police officer replied to the uninvolved young woman's comment by saying, "Do you want to see my gun?" Was the interview in jail videotaped surreptitiously? It certainly appears to be. Is this legal? Did you violate her Fifth Amendment rights by showing it publicly? Thank you in advance for clarification of these points. Briefly, a few of my of my many concerns about the way police and city leadership has handled this investigation. After seeing the body cam footage, it was even more clear to me how poorly and unprofessional the officers handled the situation. The way the police chief, mayor, and council watched that brutal footage and then expressed that they felt the department was blameless by upsetting, was upsetting to say the least. Further, the body cam camera footage makes it even more clear that the officers had many chances to use verbal de-escalation tactics and chose not to do so despite their extensive training in these tools. First, when the two residents initially complied with orders to lay down on the ground with their arms outstretched, why did the officers fail to attempt to explain what was happening calmly while the situation was safe? We saw from the video of the police apprehending the minor, still surely a traumatic incident for the kid, but much better, that after the young man was on the ground, the officer explained to him in a calm and friendly way what was happening and what they needed from him. Officer Savantes and Officer Ruff did no such thing. Rather, seconds after the residents were on the ground with their arms outstretched as instructed, the officers were shouting at the man to stand up. This appears to me very confusing. Also, as the male is walking toward them, they are repeatedly threatening to shoot him if he drops his arms. Why do they not react in the same manner to the woman if they believe she had a gun? As soon as she sat up to watch what was happening, why did Officer Savantes neglect to ask her to lay back down on the ground if he believed that was the safe position for a suspect who we believe to have a gun? This point seems particularly important because the use of force review hinges on the assertion that the officers reasonably believed that the woman had a gun. It is very hard for me to imagine that this could have been the case. If they were concerned that she had a weapon, why did Officer Savantes not instruct her to remain in prone position on the ground with her arms outstretched? Why did he not order her to put her hands up as they had done to the man? Could he reasonably believe her to have a weapon and be an imminent threat when she was walking towards him with her hands outstretched? I could go on and detail every opportunity they had to do better and shameful and and the shameful and dehumanizing nature of the meeting on the 27th, but I'm afraid I will go over time, and so I will simply detail those concerns more thoroughly in my forthcoming complaint to the civilian police review board. Thank you for your time. I hope you have all have had a chance to consider the wrong that was done on the 27th that are currently doing everything in your power to remedy it.
Okay. Next is Alan Axelrod. Good evening, Urbana City Council. I will say this three times. Systemic issues are normal. Systemic issues are normal, and systemic issues are normal. Arguing that violence is in policy is necessary for avoiding liability through lawsuits. Sure. The city doesn't want to be on the hook because one police officer audibly lost his temper. Who would want to be responsible for that? But why can't the city commit to do better? What you don't say speaks loudly to. We have residents who are struggling with rent. On top of that, we have folks who are being coerced by rental companies to accept fees that violate Urbana City code. We have people doing the work of the city, actually investigating the incident, instead of saying that because another agency said that what happened was normal, that it wasn't an issue. Demand more of your colleagues than yourself. That's the only way that we do better than having normal systemic issues, normal forms of oppression, and normal forms of trauma-exploitative policing. Sincerely, Alan. Next is Benjamin Stone. Fellow citizens of Urbana, what a depressing farce the police presentation on their assault of Aleah Lewis was. While we knew that it would be, it was still disheartening and offensive to hear them using words like juvenile suspect to describe the innocent boy they first traumatized, a child who only matches the brief description the police were given inasmuch as he's black. They later have the audacity to use him as a good example. What example is that? That even if the police are making a mistake, you do exactly what they say before you leave, before they leave you behind with an empty sorry about that, or else they might smack you around too. I should have probably, I should probably mention how convenient it is that the police didn't use bystander camera footage. That what they described as startling, starting with soft-hand restraint literally means as she approached, an officer grabbed her by the arm without warning. Maybe I should let folks know that the police didn't really give the full details of the two times that was that was subjected to being shot with a taser in the back without warning or attempts at de-escalation while already in jail. I guess the police chief doesn't like folks hearing that our brave boys in blue shoot small female prisoners in the back repeatedly with 50,000 volts, you know, to keep us safe. Do the right thing, Urbana. Drop the charges. Put the involved officers on leave. Allow an external investigation. An injury to one is an injury to all. Next up is River Brown. To whom it may concern, the incident on April 10 demonstrates a kind of lack of concern for our well-being, the citizens of Champaign-Urbana, that I never want to see in my police officers. I strongly encourage the city of Urbana to invest in a much deeper investigation of the situation and drop all charges against the victim. Defending the behavior of those officers in that video as appropriate action is sending a message that you are not invested in our safety. In specific, there have been absurd and false allegations that she was not hurt in this interaction. In my medical opinion, it is unfounded, unreasonable to report that the victim was not physically harmed after altercation that I viewed. Additionally, it appears that inflicting pain was the purpose of the officer's action at numerous points. The video is so disturbing that I do not wish to watch it even one more time. But having studied it, I recall in vivid detail several moments in which it seems evident that harm was incurred from the blows of her attackers. The assailant, who was sitting on the victim's back, cocks back his right knee and then lands a very solid knee strike to the right side of her torso with all of his force and weight behind it. I would not be surprised if she sustained a fractured rib or injuries to the viscera of her abdomen or kidneys. In another minute or so, the samocellin is sitting on her back, and he has his gun in one hand, and her handcuffs held in his other. He hyperextends her shoulders for at least a minute. This movement, which is clearly not a necessary move to maintain control of victims' movements, serves no clear purpose except to inflict pain as injury to injury. But officers' choices increase the risk that the victim would leave the scene with an injury, regardless of whether it was intentional or negligence. And if unintentional, it demonstrates the lack of understanding of how to physically manage a body without causing harm. Again, this demonstrates a kind of lack of concern for the well-being of the citizens of Champaign-Urbana that I would be appalled by if conducted by anyone, but particularly would never want to see in my police officers. We need police officers who demonstrate respect for all bodies, especially the ones that are under their charge. This incident is couched in a multitude of intersecting issues. We're in the middle of a pandemic. Everybody is stuck at home. Domestic disturbances will only increase the longer we are all cooped up. That is what epidemiologists are expecting. We need officers who are well-trained in de-escalation techniques. I want to know if you should, if I want to know if you would show this video to new recruits and to the media as an example of appropriate response to the call that they received. Is this the model of what we can expect from those charged with protecting us? Is this the model of what we can expect from our representatives who are supposed to be out, who are supposed to look out for our well-being? Thank you. Next is email from Gina Palucio. Paluso, I'm sorry. Dear City Council persons, thank you for the opportunity to address the council regarding the proposed amendment to the 200 South Vine redevelopment agreement with Green Street Realty. I've been following this redevelopment proposal since it was first announced and prior to GSR's open house on October 18 of 2018, which I attended. I emailed council on October 29, 2018, with many concerns that were raised by the letter of intent and the preliminary design of the project. I also emailed council many additional concerns on January 13, 2019, just prior to the January 14 Committee of the Hall meeting, where the redevelopment agreement was considered and approved. I come to you today with continued concerns. City staff has documented on page two of their April 28, 2020 memo to you that this redevelopment calls for a minimum $6 million budget. Page five of the February 12, 2019 signed redevelopment agreement defines that figure as not less than $5 million. GSR stated in their April 24, 2020 memo to the city staff attachment C that their new costs with substituted materials will come in at just over $8 million. Although a building permit, as published in the March 20 2020 News Gazette, lists a cost of just over $5.5 million, a $2.5 million difference. My question is, what is the true cost of this project? Page two of the redevelopment agreement states that the project commencement dates means April 1, 2019, the date on or before when construction of the project is commenced. Since that date was not met, is GSR already in violation of the terms of the agreement? Page five of the redevelopment agreement states that GSR shall provide evidence of its ability to pay for the cost of the project, including a minimum equity contribution of not less than 20%. Yet Mr. Saunders' April twenty four, twenty twenty memo to staff states that the other challenge with this project has been to find a lender that is willing to finance the development. As the city received assurances, the GSR has the twenty percent equity stake in this project that is codified in the redevelopment agreement. A section five point six of the redevelopment agreement, business owned by minorities and females, and the ten thousand dollar in staff time that the city agreed to pay to implement goals for contracting with business owned by minorities and females been implemented. Now that construction has begun. The revisions to the design in the project, of the project, as partially detailed in attachment D is not what council originally agreed to approve. In researching MAC siding, I have found that it can be added, that it can add higher expense to the occupants of the building, buildings that use this type of product due to the heat conductivity nature of metal. Attachment D does not provide a detailed view of the proposed new materials. As stated by Mr. Saunders' April twenty four, twenty twenty memo to staff, GSR's project at one oh three East Healy Street, Champaign, is a good representation of the MAC siding. I have attached photos of the project taken May fourth to this email for your reference. In my opinion, this material does not blend well with the current built environment of Vine Street or the residential Urbana or Urbana Avenue neighborhood. Per the attached photos, it appears to buckle in places and does not represent any of the materials currently in use in downtown Urbana or along the adjacent Vine Street Courthouse or Urbana Avenue buildings. From Governor Pritzker's executive orders regarding COVID nineteen, construction is considered an essential business. I find Mr. Saunders' reference to the pandemic as a contributing factor to delays of this project in his April twenty four, twenty twenty memo to staff misleading at best. It's been over a year since construction was to begin on this project. I look forward to a response to the questions raised above. Thanks again for your time and the work you all put in for the residents of Urbana. And the last one I have is from Najah Robot. I am writing to comment on last week's heavily biased presentation by police chief in regards to their assaults on a young black woman. I wish I could say I was surprised that our police officers sworn to protect and serve told the woman to act like a lady while assaulting her. I wish I was surprised that the police presentation didn't include a single mention of the multiple taser assaults the woman received while under police custody. Was she being unladylike again? I suppose we'll never know since the mayor and city council seem committed to sweeping this incident under the rug like so many cases of police violence. I ask that the council moves to drop all charges against this woman, that a full independent investigation of police misconduct is held, that the officers involved in this violence are put on leave, that training and education regarding facial violence and violence against women are implemented for all police officers. I also wanted to hear from council, the mayor, or the police chief why a taser was used in prison against this woman. That's all that I have.
Okay, thanks, Charlie.
Charlie.
We do have one person with their hand up. If you want to speak and you haven't had your input read already, you should be able to click on participants at the bottom, get a participant list, and then raise your hand. So first I have Tracy Chong. Let's see if I can unmute. Did that work?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, hi, my name is Tracy Chong from Urbana. I've been hearing about the Urbana Civilian Police Review Board CPRB being brought up several times in the context of the police assault against Aleah Lewis. I personally have been through the police complaint process and follow CPRB meetings and the appeal process very closely. My concern is that the CPRB has shown to be basically useless at this point. And I want city council and members of the concerned public to know of the deficiencies of the board, especially moving forward in the Lewis case. CPRB is supposed to have regular quarterly meetings. However, in two thousand and eighteen, they canceled one meeting and had their last meeting of the year in October. In two thousand and nineteen, the first three meetings of the year were canceled, so the next meeting was held in July, meaning that there was a nine-month span where CPRB did not meet. This year, they've met twice, one being a special appeals meeting. They've canceled their April meeting and they have also no future set dates. During these meetings, they are almost always board members absent. For example, people like the ex-chair Grace Mitchell, Urbana Human Relations Officer, Vassilia Clark. These guys don't even bother to make the meetings that are already sorely held. The scope of CPRB review has also been very diluted over the past few years. For example, when the taser policy was first established, CPRB was to review every incident where an officer displaced a taser. However, in their two thousand and nineteen meetings, CPRB voted to only review incidents where a taser was discharged. This was mostly because the board members deemed it a waste of time and also because of Lieutenant Richard Salz's constant complaining at every meeting that it took too long about the time that it takes for him to redact video footage. In the past, board members have had access to all complaints and could independently review each complaint. In the past years, though, city staff has stopped this practice and board members no longer have access to all complaints made by citizens. Now they only see a case when a citizen is unhappy with the police investigation of their complaint against the police and initiate an appeals process. More importantly, the board has not been busy reviewing the appeals. And in the past five years, the board has only seen three appeal cases because of all the hurdles the city and police department has put up as it makes it difficult for citizens to appeal. In the last city council meeting, Mayor Marlin mentioned that the CPRB is an appeals board therefore would not investigate or review complaints by citizens. This is not true. According to Urbana City ordinance, all complaints shall be submitted to CPRB within seven working days of the filing date. In addition, CPRB should be, should maintain a registry of complaints. The ordinance also states that CPRB collect data and provide an annual report which shall be made public. So the ordinance clearly states that CPRB should have access to all complaints and this process has been stopped by the city. Is this an effort by the city and Mayor Marlin to remove power from CPRB? How can citizens trust the city and the board to have oversight over the Urbana Police Department? Is the city taking away the only form of independent review of the Urbana Police Department? Speaking of independent review, maybe Mayor Marlin and city council member Dennis Roberts have a very disturbing idea of what an independent review is. How dare you guys call a review by the state's attorney Julia Reeds of the police officers involved in the Lewis case an independent review? Do you guys not see the conflict of interest? That is shameful and deceitful. Finally, regarding the city's response and seeing the police treatment of the initial juvenile suspect and their brutality against Ms. Lewis, the message is very clear. It is a chilling threat from the Urbana Police Department to all citizens that if citizens comply with whatever the police command, they will only be mildly abused. But if anyone dares question, speak up or not comply, they will face the full force of police brutality. And the city says that that is business as usual. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more hand raised from the public and then we'll go to a couple of council members. Linda. Oops.
Can you hear me?
No, try now.
Okay. Hello?
Good, thanks.
Okay. I'd like to make a statement in regards to the case of Aleah Lewis, who was violently apprehended by Urbana Police on April tenth in Urbana. Last week's presentation to the city council by the police presented footage from multiple body cams and dash cams. And while it may have appeared to present a complete story of what happened that day, both bystander videos show much more clearly that there was brutal assault being committed by these police officers. For anyone unaware, I'd like to bring to the attention of the public that there is an additional video of the event on YouTube. Excuse me, under the name Good Friday, Urbana four ten twenty. This video was taken from a different angle and a closer proximity than the original bystander video. In the video, within the first three minutes, you can see the officer sitting on top of Ms. Lewis, punch her in the head with dramatic force. He also forcefully knee kicks her in the side while sitting on top of her. In addition, and this is not something that we heard or that you can even, that you can hear in any of the other footage yet, is that Ms. Lewis asks, this is at minute two, minutes and thirty seconds into the video. She says, I want to ask a question. And the, one of the officers, one of the three officers on top of her responds, well, you don't approach us. We got guns and stuff. And then after this, the officer continued to sit on Ms. Lewis for several minutes after she'd already been forcibly restrained and handcuffed. Now, I question any police officer's judgment as well as his ability to function properly in his job if he feels justified in punching a woman in the head as well as knee kicking her all while he is sitting on top of her. I also question our police force as an institution if they feel this is justified behavior and anyone else who sees this and says that this is okay, this is absolutely unacceptable behavior. I would also like to point out another thing that was not actually very clearly recorded in this video either, unfortunately, but I very clearly witnessed. Later on, during the time when Ms. Lewis was being put into the police car, two young women were walking on the sidewalk behind me and stopped to watch what was going on. One of them made a comment about the police being racist. One of the officers who was standing at the, at the vehicle heard her and looked over and just as he's walking out of the video frame, so you can't see him in the point when he's saying something, he says, you want to see my gun? And the young woman responds to him, that's none of my business. So again, anyone who wants to see this, the video on YouTube, you can look Good Friday, Urbana four ten twenty. Now, I would like to also make a comment that I'm deeply disturbed by the casual way these officers are carrying around automatic assault rifles in Urbana, right next to a park with a playground where children play, as if it's, this is not appropriate anywhere. But, and I understand that there was a gun, there was gunfire, and that is the justification that they provided in their presentation. I understand that. And yet, they have these guns slung over their shoulders without control over it while they're trying to wrestle this woman to the ground. This is ridiculous. I also find very problematic and cavalier, the cavalier and intimidating attitude these officers displayed regarding their guns, as if holding and carrying a gun confers them power over and the privilege of intimidating others, especially anyone who questions their actions, such as even Ms. Lewis trying to ask a simple question which they had not informed her anything about why she was even being arrested before laying hands on her and then throwing her to the ground. This is not what police officers are meant to be. Their mandated role and responsibility is to uphold peace in our communities. And if they are incapable of doing that, it is up to our elected officials, our city council, our mayor, in partnership with the community to ensure that they do so. Together, I hope that we have the courage to create peace in our community, starting with our officers of the peace and holding them accountable for excessive force, which is also called violence and brutality. In addition, I'm also calling for all legal charges against Aleah Lewis to be dropped and that any financial charges levied against her related to this arrest be dropped if outstanding or if already paid be refunded. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Linda. And for the miss, could we have your last name?
Sure, Quine.
Quine, okay, thank you. We have a couple of council members with their hands up. If you want to make a brief statement, I guess, Sharice.
Phil, Danielle Chenoweth has her hand up as well.
Okay, the council members were first, but we could go to more public input. Want to do that first?
Go ahead.
Okay. Danielle?
Thank you. My name is Danielle Chenoweth. I live at four twelve West Illinois Street in Urbana. Regarding the Good Friday incident, I'm extremely concerned with the manner in which the city has communicated with the public, conducted this investigation and shared the results. I have four points. In defending the specific action of two Urbana officers who chose to physically engage with an escalated subject, causing harm to themselves and her, city leaders have continuously referred to other incidents of gun violence in the community. Those incidents have nothing to do with this case. They are not linked by people or affiliation. But by repeating unrelated events, the city appears to attempt to justify egregious violations of a person's civil and human rights in the name of general public safety. Such violations have shown time and again to make us less safe, residents less likely to call nine one one, less trustful and more likely to view police actions as a front to their dignity. Here are the facts of this case. The woman who was thrown to the ground, punched, kneed, forced face down with a rifle in her back, the one who had her arms stretched beyond safe limits, who had a bag put over her head, who was shackled at the ankles by police and then laser tased in the jail. She did not have a gun. She never had a gun. She has no record of touching or using a gun. She is not part of any gang or group linked to other incidents of gun violence in our community. She is clearly wearing pajama pants with no place to conceal a gun and her hands are visible in the video. If anything, she may have been a victim of a gun threat that day. And I consider unacceptable to justify police beating of a young black woman because of a pattern of gun violence in her neighborhood. So I respectfully ask you to stop linking those events. Second, a genuine and fair investigation looks at all sides of the situation. This was a hasty investigation that appeared from the beginning to be a rush to justify an incident of police brutality caught on camera. We are told she was not injured when we saw impact, heard screaming, and the victim was not taken to the arch to be assessed. We were told she was not a victim of domestic violence and yet her apartment had furniture overturned. Please have your officers and city officials forty hour trained in domestic violence. Her voice of protest was literally drowned out in the presentation by the chief justifying the physical violence against her. Three, I'm extremely concerned about allegation that Urbana police officers visited the home of the Facebook poster and pressured him to take down the video. City leaders must investigate this allegation immediately as a counter to your statements of transparency. Four, the presentation at last week's meeting appeared to violate the defendant's right to a fair trial with representation. You presented evidence against her without allowing her the ability to represent herself or have representation. Did you ask her attorney's permission to show this information? I believe you may have contaminated the jury pool in Champaign County. Two, you violate her fourth, fifth amendment right to remain silent. The video in jail starts under the table between the officer's legs, a sign it was done without her consent in secret. Her attorney should have had the right to reject this evidence being shown. You have violated that right. Three, and I consider this the most egregious, you violated her right to privacy as you have now shown on public TV close-up images of her body being brutalized, including a close-up of her buttocks. You did not consider that she had parents, relatives, friends, coworkers? I ask you, if she was your family member, your friend, if she was my kid, if she was white, would you have displayed this embarrassing material in a highly public way? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Emily Agrejas?
Hi, I'm a Champaign resident. I'm speaking the day with my experience as I've served as chair of the Citizen Police Review Subcommittee for the past two years. For our training, we undergo dozens of hours of training on CPD policy. We do ten hours of police ride-alongs annually. We need that training to review citizen complaints well. And also officers need to become familiar with questions that a citizen review panel might ask about investigation findings. We are trained so extensively because reviews can be done poorly. The public is not well-served by a review that does not ask informed questions. The review then becomes a theater of accountability. Officers presenting the findings of an investigation might make choices and framing that persuade the reviewer and the reviewer is none the wiser. I witnessed a poor review of police conduct at last week's Urbana City Council meeting. City council meeting, or city council members are not trained to review police complaints. It is my understanding that city council members met in pairs with lieutenant and, and the police chief in preparation for that meeting. Here you reviewed body and dash cam footage and had the opportunity to ask questions and discuss procedures. There were no interviews of bystanders made available to you. The same footage was presented in the city council meeting of some, not all officers at the scene. Again, you are not briefed in UPD policy. I have reviewed the video and body cam footage, I'm sorry, and reviewed the body cam footage that was made available in that meeting and the videos made available by bystanders. I found no reason for the city council to be satisfied with the professionalism shown by officers in that video. The presentation last week noted that officers are held responsible for what might be considered reasonable perception of subject uh, for what might be considered, uh, reasonable perception of subject actions. That is true. Officers are also held accountable for the training required by state law that they have had to take over the years. A seasoned officer is held to a higher standard than a rookie in his or her first year. Urbana Police Policy also states that officers are supposed to give multiple opportunities for voluntary compliance before resorting to a use of force. Officers have the option to also exercise discretion on how they enforce the law. For these reasons, in a use of force, reasonable is the floor, not the ceiling for professional conduct. When I reviewed the footage, I saw no real attempt or opportunity for voluntary compliance for that resident. The resident asks why she's being detained, why she can't go home, and asks for an officer to explain. She then takes a few steps forward. Her hands are visible the entire time. She's not fleeing the scene as, uh, one qualification for usual recent, uh, use of force, uh, stipulates. She's walking towards them. Then Sergeant Cervantes, um, uh, then says, oh, you're fixing to go to jail and sprints towards the resident. So Sergeant Cervantes then noted during the restraint, don't approach us, we've got guns and stuff. And then Officer Ruff's assault rifle is also flailing around. At one time, the resident rolls on top of it. Sergeant Coker, an instructor, um, on verbal de-escalation, uh, training for, uh, Urbana Police, tells her to act like a lady. The resident asks officers to talk with her respect, uh, more, with more respect. Sergeant Cervantes replies, we tried that. These are just some reasons, uh, some considerations that could have been aired and considered at, um, at a, at a full review of police conduct that did not come out. Um, the unfortunate outcome of that slipshod review likely discouraged fu- future complainants from coming forward and gave no reason for Urbana Police Officers to reach a little higher and improve their professionalism. Finally, it is not the city's job to defend city government. It is the city's job to serve the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Okay, we have, uh, two council members, Sharice. I think you can unmute yourself. Sharice? There you go.
Um, I just wanted to say that I had a phone call from a concerned citizen just before the meeting. And she was concerned that the police were not wearing, she, uh, observed or witnessed a stop by Urbana Police on Saturday and they were not wearing their mask during the stop. So, um, I just want to encourage and to, um, uh, if, uh, say basically that, um, our policemen, I mean, I know you're under a lot of pressure doing all this, but we need, also need to remember that the wearing of your mask is not just for your safety, but it is also for the safety of the people that you come in contact with. And we need to remember that. In addition, there, I do, I do want to comment on a lot of the public statements that we have been getting regarding the Aaliyah Lewis issue. And one of those things is, um, I keep hearing about her being a victim of domestic violence, which she may very well have been. But that is not the call that the police got. That is not what they were responding to. They weren't responding to a domestic violence call, they're responding to a shots fired call. Uh, regarding the, the armory that the police had at the time. Um, when you are, when you are re- uh, applying to that type of, of call, you're responding to that kind of call, you don't know what you're walking into. And, um, they had heavy, heavy arms because, because they did not know what they were walking into. And that is what they get paid to do. Um, another thing regarding her being tased in custody, I have not heard anything about that. I don't know that any of us have. Uh, her custody at the time when she, when she is taken into custody, she, my belief and my understanding is that she is then in sheriff's custody, not Urbana Police custody. She's not at the, at the Urbana jail. I could be wrong. Um, she is at the, the county jail. And that is the sheriff's department, my understanding. I could be wrong. The other thing, um, is that she was interviewed the next day. Yes, and there was, uh, uh, the body cam was on the police officer, I believe it was Officer Rich. And there were no signs of bruises. She did not complain of any pain. She didn't say anything about being tased, at least not to that officer. She apologized for her behavior. She said that she did not recollect her behavior. And, um, seemed to be surprised that she had actually spit and kicked the officer she was talking to, spit on and kicked at the officer she was talking to. Um, when we talk about the police having, shouldn't, you know, that's the other complaint about police not being COVID safe, safe and so on and so forth. Um, and she wasn't. And so when you want to accuse a policeman of being of attempted murder as someone did, um, because they didn't have on a mask, she spit on a police officer. And doesn't that put her in the same, in the same, um, tea kettle, so to speak? Um, so I, I think all of us need to take a, kind of calm down for a minute, just take it down a notch and actually look at how this particular situation has gone from in- instead of being, you know, people being proactive, we've become, everything has been reactive. And, um, it bothers me that we do not, we are not dialoguing. I get emails and I'm sure, uh, my fellow council members are getting emails of everybody talking at us and telling us their demands, uh, uh, regarding things that we actually have no power to do anything about. That goes to the state's attorney's office. Um, the one person that would have had more power to do anything about is, is Aaliyah Lewis herself. We would not be having these discussions had she only complied. And I'm sorry to say that, but that is how it is when you deal with police. As a black woman in, in, since everyone's, one wants to bring up the blackness of her. As a black woman having lived in Los Angeles County for thirty years, having been brought up, raised and, uh, graduating from Urbana High here, I understand what that means. And having a degree in African American studies and actually studied what kind of, uh, issues we have from the black community regarding law enforcement nationwide, not just in Urbana. I understand that. The other thing I also understand is mutual respect. And I also understand that you have to live through a particular situation in or, in order to even get through it. One of those ways to do that, a lot of times, is to do what the police ask you to do. Nothing happened, uh, to the gentleman that was arrested for carrying a gun. Nothing happened, uh, violently to the gentleman that was stopped before they even came across them. Um, we can talk about the, the suspicion of her being uh, abused by the gentleman with the gun that she was walking down the street, but how, we don't have any, not only do we not have any real facts about that, me as a council member myself, don't have any facts about what may have happened to her. I can't begin to speculate what may have happened before. Uh, whether she was being beaten before, her, her home was said to be in disarray. That could have been for several different reasons. We don't know. I don't know. And I don't know that anybody that has an opinion about it really knows. So I think we need to tap down. It's, it's getting to a point where, you know, to me, we're blaming, we're, we're just playing a blame game and I don't want, I, I want, I like facts. I like to see, I like to have both sides of the story. And, um, I've kind of seen both sides on a particular level. But it really just comes down to, I think, we need to, to, um, you know, I keep hearing they said or so and so said. None of that evidence has ever been brought before the city council. So any evidence of tasing or anything, uh, not by the victim or the perpetrator or however you want to define her, nor by the police chief. So if she was tased, we've not been told about it and she's not giving us any, any information at all. And I can't go by he said, she said. That's basically all I want to say.
Okay, thanks, Sharice.
I raised my hand repeatedly. At least I clicked on the icon with the hand symbol. I don't know what.
Go ahead. You're unmuted. Go ahead, Sarah.
Okay, thank you. So, my name is Sarah Nixon. Urbana Police Department and Julia Reitz and Mayor Marlin claim that the fact that Ms. Lewis did not call for help means that the issue of domestic violence was not present in this situation. This is disturbing. Survivors face many barriers before calling police for help. And they frequently cite fear of reprisal by the abuser, among others, as a reason for not calling nine one one. So in this case, a neighbor called nine one one. This means the dispatcher never even had a chance to find out before the officers arrived on the scene whether or not this was a domestic violence situation. The focus and priority was the gun violence. But another priority always must be attending to victims who are close to the gun violence and critically so in cases where a domestic partner is on the scene. That response needs to be automatic and I am appalled it is not your standard protocol. The fact that a victim does not call the police is never a sign that there is no domestic violence. Here are flags that are signs of domestic violence. The incident report confirms evidence of a violent struggle in the apartment prior to Mr. Busby discharging his gun. Ms. Lewis, the victim, was in a state of great distress. Ms. Lewis, the victim, may have turned to self-medication, reportedly taking something for anxiety. Ms. Lewis, the victim, may have showed trouble following simple orders, especially those that were issued by screaming men wielding weapons and repeatedly telling her they are going to shoot her. Also, here are some flags that told you you were dealing with a normal human being. The victim, Ms. Lewis, reacted aggressively when she was attacked. The victim, Ms. Lewis, fought back when you initiated violence upon her. Domestic violence is not just black guys and broken limbs. That is a myth. In Ms. Lewis's case, domestic violence included the threat of gun violence to her person, the willful exposure to life-threatening situations, as well as the exposure to the threat of police brutality and wrongful arrest. The perpetrator had a gun, she did not. He exposed her to gun violence, he exposed her to the risk of arrest, he exposed her to the risk of police violence. All of these things are domestic violence. Finally, and most glaringly, Ms. Lewis had been placed at huge risk for gun violence to her person, to the risk of homicide. According to Bureau of Justice Statistics, black women are thirty-five percent more likely to be victimized by domestic violence than white women and four times more likely than white women to be killed by boyfriend or girlfriend. National homicide data confirms that firearms are the most common method used to kill black women. So I think we critically need to ask, what does domestic violence-informed policing in our community look like? It does not look like what the Urbana Police Department is currently practicing. What does trauma-informed policing look like? It does not look like what the UPD is practicing, and this is why victims don't come forward. Your Urbana Police Department attitude that abuse of women is acceptable and to be ignored is all too familiar. My own repeated pleas for help were systematically minimized, ridiculed and discounted by the very city employees who were charged to protect me and my daughter. You chose instead to protect and shield our abuser. So I know the Urbana Police Department to be an agency that turns a blind eye to domestic violence and child abuse. Is it any wonder that victims, more largely, have a strong reluctance to turning to law enforcement for help? If we look to larger data, research on law enforcement responses to partner abuse with almost seven hundred survivors conducted by the National Domestic Violence Hotline concluded that women do not call police due to many barriers, including fear that doing so will make things worse, fear that the offender will only get a slap on the wrist, or fearing that the police will not believe them or will do nothing. This is what those who work in the domestic violence field hear every day. And it contributes to the black community's silence on domestic violence. And African American women face many additional barriers, not least of which is the alarming incident of police shooting black people. African Americans' report being terrified and caught in a catch twenty-two. Now, there can be no excuse for UPD Chief Bryant Sarathen, State's Attorney Julia Reitz and Mayor of Urbana Diane Marlin to be oblivious of these basic facts of domestic violence. At the previous council meeting, you stated yourselves that domestic violence is the highest volume calls, calls to the department. In closing, it is clear to laypeople and experts alike that the Urbana Police Department's revictimization of Ms. Lewis either violates department policies or the policies need changing. If this incident and public outcry doesn't trigger a full independent inquiry and policy reform, what will? Are you waiting for fatal misconduct? The Urbana Police Department critically needs independent investigation and fixing. It needs outside help. City leaders, do your jobs. And if you are not prepared to do your jobs, then step down so that competent leaders can take your place. There are so many honorable and outstanding men and women in blue. Thank God. But for those who are disgracing the badge and for the elected leadership that protects them while failing the rest of us, watchdogs are vital. And we, the community, must and will continue to watch and to call for reform. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Dennis, you were next, I think?
All right, so I believe I'm unmuted. So I'm, first of all, um, we've spent quite a lot of time, um, reviewing and listening to the concerns of the public. And I, I think that's a really important part of our, uh, responsibility as elected officials here on the city council, even in the committee, the whole to, um, to listen to the comments. And I have a couple thoughts. First of all, just by the, the very, uh, magnitude of the number of people who've commented and wished to participate in the conversations via email or by these discussions, I think that, um, we need to take these, take the review of the incident very seriously. And, uh, partly because, uh, we want to ascertain whether our police force can do better. I don't know if I'm interested in, um, trying, trying the police through public comment and dissertation, uh, you know, during the coun- council meeting. I don't think that's appropriate. But I think the call for deeper review is, uh, valid. When I observed the, uh, videotapes from the police, um, uh, body cameras and the car camera, uh, I would have said that, uh, there were several instances where I would have, uh, I felt disappointed in the actions and the direction in which the activities took place concerning, uh, Mrs. Lewis, Ms. Lewis. Um, a person who apparently may have not been completely, uh, uh, without having, um, some substance abuse, uh, evident in her actions and physical, physical, um, uh, deportment could have been, uh, a signal to, uh, really work with, with de-escalation. could have been, uh, a signal to, uh, really work with, with de-escalation, um, protocols during the, during the detention of the subject. And it worked so differently, um, between, uh, the, the female that was under, uh, detention, um, stop and the male. And it was sort of an interesting thing that, yes, she displayed a lot of anxiety and feistiness, and she had quite a verbal harangue to take. But I think that our officers need to understand how to address a person in that kind of duress, as well as to defend, you know, make sure that they are being safe themselves. And it wasn't really apparent to me that the officers in question, um, had sufficient training. I, I think that, that, uh, there's a real concern in the public, and certainly in my mind now, and I've heard it from members of the CPRB, that, um, right now, it seems like the CPRB is rather dysfunctional in its ability to address these kinds of, um, topics. Partly because the staffing for the CPRB has changed about three or four times in the last three years. And it, the department has been reorganized so that there's even a different uh, individual in charge of the CPRB, uh, personnel. And I think that that disruption, the activity of the CPRB, has not been good or wise. I guess it's been unfortunate. I think that the CPR should be meeting. I think the CPR should be, uh, reviewing, uh, different kinds of, uh, events. And I understand from CPRV, uh, members that there have been reviews, for example, of taser, uh, display and taser use, which have, um, not been reported for three years, when this is supposed to be a, and a report that comes out at least once a year, if not biannually. So the city staff itself, um, needs to get bucket up and get these reports out so that the CPRB can, you can evaluate, uh, the use of tasers, if any. Now, understand that there's been very little taser use. And that might be a moot point perhaps, but it's important for the CPRB to know that, to get the reports. And the city council is expecting reports on an annual basis at least, and we have not had one in several years. Secondly, the, uh, the, uh, reports, the staffing of the CPRB, you know, I've said is, uh, very important to the community. I think that they need to have the full staffing to support them, and, I, and I'd, I'd like to ask that the, that our, our mayor, Diane Marlin, take a more proactive role in, um, in listening to the community's concerns. And I would suggest that, uh, we put, uh, the officers who were involved in this on a three-week, um, required leave, and before they come back, they have a review of both, um, de-escalation procedures, and also the use of, of force techniques on a, on suspects where it is unknown whether there are any, uh, direct threat to the physical form of the policeman. And I would agree that when three people, three grown officers are sitting on one woman, no matter how strongly she's disagreeing with you, there needs to be fewer guns, um, being held by the officers whenever possible. And also, there needs to be, um, few, more discussion, more talking, more focusing the, the individual, uh, before, um, punching or kicking or, or kneeling takes place. And I, I don't know if that was possible in this case, but it certainly is a concern of the community. And, um, I would like to have the mayor take a more active role in setting up a, maybe a deeper review, or more, uh, or if it's possible, I would really suggest that Ms. Lewis make, file a complaint if she was interested in doing so, and so that the CPRB can have a chance in reviewing this, um, this incident. Um, I think I just, I'm just responding to what I hear is a lot of cogent comment and concerns from what people who I really value for their opinion in, and are expressing, uh, desire to see an improvement perhaps in training techniques or review for certain officers in how to appropriately, uh, handle these very delicate and, um, significant experiences which people are undergoing. So that's what I want to say.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jared, you have your hand up?
Oh, I didn't, uh, know we were gonna be making council comments on this issue tonight, or I would have prepared something. Uh, but apparently Sharice and Dennis were both in on this, so, uh, I just want to say one thing. I know there were a couple people who made public comments tonight who did not, uh, also email the council, and I would, uh, highly recommend if you guys are still here or folks, uh, are listening to this meeting who know the folks who made those comments, to encourage them to email them to us so that we can see them, uh, that way as well and have that record. Uh, I don't, I don't have a ton, uh, to say on this right now, just because I am very, very upset by what, uh, Sharice had to say about this, and, uh, I'm not in an emotional state to make a comment about it, so I'm gonna refrain from doing so. But I want people who are listening to understand that Sharice does not in any way speak for the entire council, nor for everyone who is here. Uh, those are her comments and her opinions about what happened, and I vehemently disagree with a number of them. But we're not gonna get in, I'm not gonna get into that tonight. Uh, there was another forum that's appropriate for that. And speaking of which, uh, Jane McClintock did, uh, email us while we were having this conversation, uh, with the, uh, FOIA request that has the report from the sheriff's office about the tasering, that happens, uh, to Ms. Lewis in the jail. So we do have that. If anybody wants, uh, a copy of it who didn't have it already. And she also, uh, mentioned something that I think would be extremely useful, which is to have a forum on this topic, even if not necessarily directly related to Mrs. Lewis's incident. But, uh, I think that a lot of what we were talking about extends beyond, uh, just the, you know, technical principles of, you know, you did A, so B happened to you. Uh, it extends beyond that to say things like, disagreeing with the police is a, is a good enough reason for them to lay their hands on you and do whatever they want. And I couldn't disagree with that more. That's, you know, I, I can't remember exactly how long it was between when the officers start issuing commands, to Ms. Lewis and, uh, the gentleman who was with her, and the moment that Sergeant Servantes puts his hand on Alea Lewis's arm, and the whole thing goes downhill, but it was not long. It was maybe a minute, maybe a minute and a half. And if disagreeing with the police for a minute and a half is warrants enough for what happened to her to happen to her, then, then there's a problem with how we're looking at this. Uh, I, I'm gonna keep going if I, if I do, and I would like to reserve commenting on this for, uh, appropriate time. We need to put this on the agenda to have a conversation about this. Public forum would be great. I would welcome that. Those are my comments. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Jared. Um, Sharice, you can respond briefly if you want, and then Eric has his hand up.
Yeah, that's all I wanted to do. And I, I am not trying to villainize anybody. That's number one. Number two, what I would like, because I appreciate the, the, the input that the public has, but it's difficult for anybody to speak up about something when they don't have the information about it. So when we start off with, um, with, you know, from what I've read with my emails, with the police were answering a domestic violence thing, I, I just like to set things in order. You know, that's all. And my understanding is that it wasn't a domestic violence call. And I, and I have all kinds of empathy if this child is in fact being, uh, living with someone that's, that is violating her. Um, but I cannot comment regarding on what other people said happened. Then I don't have the information if that really happened or not. And the other thing is that when I do comment, I, I can only comment about what the facts seem to be. And the facts seem to be that they were out on a, not on a domestic violence call, but on a, um, shots fired call. And nationwide, when, you know, when police are called out on shots fired, they show loaded for bear. That's kind of how it goes. I do agree with Dennis on, on some, uh, some things where, where maybe things need to be investigated even further. I agree with you, Jared, regarding, uh, us actually having a public forum. And I thank Ms. McClintock for also emailing me regarding the information, uh, regarding a taser. But that is not something that we had any, at least I didn't, maybe you did. I had no knowledge of there being a taser used, and if it happened in the county jail, then that means the sheriff's department is responsible for her custody. Am I incorrect in saying that? Am I incorrect? Or am I correct? Okay, so that's not the police department, the Urbana Police Department, that is the sheriff's department.
That's right.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that. I could, you know, and that's, I welcome anybody that, you know, if you, if you, if you can correct me, correct me when I say it, please. So I just don't want everything getting so wrapped up in emotion that we fail to see a solution, or that we fail to see a resolution. And I get a lot of emotional emails. And what I don't want is that we stop having any kind of dialogue because of he said, she said, and they said. And I, and I keep asking who is they when I'm reading these emails? You know, I heard, or you saw, you saw something. We all look at, at particular situations from the prism of our own, uh, experience. And, um, I can, I can totally respect, you know, other people's opinions or other people's perspectives, um, without having to call them out of their name, or say anything mean about them. And I would hope that you, you know, that person would be able to do the same with me. And if you see something different, by all means, educate me. I'm open to it.
Thanks, Reese. Eric, and then Bill.
Um, I do feel an obligation to make a statement about this, but I also feel an obligation to sort things out and prepare a statement. Uh, so, uh, where, which delineates what I believe to be the facts of the case, and, and how I believe those facts are relevant to how this should be resolved, uh, or how the resolution of it should continue. Because I think the discussion, uh, does, does suggest that there's some further process perhaps that needs to go on. Um, I'm concerned about Ms. Lewis, uh, perhaps from a different perspective from other people. And that was the reason that when we were publicly in dialogue with the state's attorney, I talked about whether the case might be, might be directed towards drug court, because this is another aspect that seems to have been, uh, involved. But in any case, I, I, I will get my, I'll get my act together and better organized and, and, and have a statement for, uh, for next week as part of, but I, I want to say that I really, uh, support what Sharice is saying, is that, um, I think it is important for us to dialogue with each other as opposing, as opposed to throwing demands at each other.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Bill, and then Mary Allen.
I too did not have any, um, prepared statements for tonight. Uh, but I did, uh, scratch out a few thoughts here on, um, on a piece of paper. Um, just because I think it's time for me to kind of, uh, speak up and, and, uh, make my views and feelings known as well. I do appreciate everybody's, uh, you know, the citizens of Champaign-Urbana and the surrounding community for, uh, weighing in on an issue that, um, that is very dear to them, that concerns them in a very deep manner. Um, I appreciate the, uh, the, the comments from the council members so far. I do appreciate, um, Chief Seraphin's, um, presentation last week. I believe he went, um, very deliberately, uh, step by step in an attempt to show from an officer's perspective of the facts presented to them at the time, uh, sort of what they were thinking, their training, and why they acted the way they did. Um, as a member of the city council, I believe I occupy a very unique perspective that I've been an active law enforcement officer for my entire adult life, uh, thirty-four years and counting. Um, I've been to gun calls. I have been to shots fired calls. Uh, I have fought with citizens. I have fought with citizens that were, uh, influenced by drugs, that were drunk, that did not want criminal activity exposed, that did not want to go to prison or to jail. And unfortunately, I've fought with women before as well. Um, I have been in incidents where I didn't know what the next five seconds was gonna be, or the next five minutes was gonna be. I have had, and I still do hold, a responsibility to ensure the safety of my community. Uh, the Urbana Police Department is guided by the facts, by the law, by department policy, and by their training. The state's attorney's office is guided by the law and the constitution, as we all are. I believe that a lot of people are making comments, and I believe this is more towards the public, um, based on assumptions, based on maybe self-generated facts, perhaps based on emotions. And I agree wholeheartedly with Councilwoman, uh, Hersi, uh, we need to talk to one another, not at one another. I believe this further dialogue is, is warranted, but I don't believe that, uh, council, you know, uh, of the whole or city council meeting is perhaps the best place for that. Uh, you know, there is venues, whether it be internal for the Urbana Police Department and the state's attorney's office to review the facts. But I believe, uh, this situation begs for a larger, uh, conversation with the community, where once again, we can talk to one another, not at one another, and when emotions, uh, perhaps are a little bit, a little bit lower. Uh, that's all I've got to say tonight. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thanks. Mary Allen.
I just want to say, uh, one quick thing, which is that the public, um, the city government, everybody has been thinking very hard, reviewing lots of information, watching lots of videos. I think at this point, the best direction would be to have an independent investigation, um, to be, allow different, somebody who's not part of the entire situation, be able to look at it from a different perspective. So I just asked my fellow committee members and the mayor to strongly consider independent review. That's it.
Good. Okay, thank you all, and thank the public. Uh, I wanted to thank the public for, for all the, um, thoughtful messages you've brought us tonight, um, either during the Zoom meeting or an email. Um, so we'll move on to the agenda. Uh, the next item is staff. Um, so we'll move on to the agenda. Uh, the next item, staff report. Is there any staff report?
Yeah, sorry. Um, had a little trouble getting my mic on. Um, this is Carol Mitten, City Administrator. Um, Bill, you had asked, um, for a couple of updates. I'm, I'm prepared to do one of them tonight and you'll see a couple next week. So you had asked for an update on, um, you know, revenue projections and where we are in budget preparation. And, um, Elizabeth Hannan had been planning on doing that next week, and so we will be prepared to do that next week. Um, you had also requested an update on the comprehensive plan efforts that are underway, being led by Andrea Rudy. And, um, we have some, I, I think we'll have a, a better report, um, giving that next week because we have some efforts underway that are helping to, um, to, I, I think, uh, shape the direction of the comprehensive plan that maybe we hadn't even anticipated when we started. So um, she'll be prepared to, to make a report on that next week. And then you had requested also a, um, an update on, uh, Public Works and where we are with some staffing. And I, I'd be happy to give you that update, but I also wanted to, um, give you an update on uh, where we are with some of the projects that I, I've been trying to, um, keep you informed about as, as we proceed through. So I'll just, I'll just run through that quickly. And then if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. So, um, EMCOR Phase Five began, um, today. The road closure started today on Green Street between McCullough and Race. And that project will go until, um, November, when substantial, um, substantial completion is expected in, um, late November. And we will be having a virtual public meeting with, um, anyone from that, um, affected community on May twelfth. The Dr. Ellis Project, where we're making upgrades to the, um, infrastructure there is well underway. And, um, we're really happy with the progress there. Kinch Street is not as robustly underway, but we're, um, exchanging some submittals with the contractor there. That's the lighting project. Then we have the Nevada, um, street, street lighting project that, um, we'll have a bid opening on that. Uh, that's the Series Street Lighting Replacement Project. Uh, the bid opening will be May fourteenth. The Vine and Washington Project, the bid packets will be available this Friday, the eighth of May. We have a bid opening scheduled for that project, May twenty-second. Um, we also, um, we now have the intersection analysis of Main and Vine completed. And we'll schedule, we, we were going to ask Fair Graham, who did that um, analysis to make a presentation to council, and we're working on scheduling that with them. Um, Bill, I think you had asked me, um, a week or two ago about Race Street. And, um, what we're doing with that right now is we're determining, um, what the, the status of the plans that, um, had been prepared in the past to see what level of completion they're at. And it's not clear, um, yet whether that had included, or whether the cost estimate had included, um, sidewalks or not. But as we develop our, um, the, the, um, figures for the, um, CIP, we will, um, we'll make sure we'll have options, um, that include sidewalk, a couple of sidewalk variations um, for that. But that construction won't take place. Um, it won't take place in this, in this year. We'll be working on design this year. Um, so on the Public Works staffing front, um, we had decided that we wanted to take a break on trying to recruit a permanent director. So we went with, um, one of the recruiters and asked them to try and recruit for us an interim Public Works Director and/or City Engineer. We have two candidates that we will be, uh, that have been identified. And, um, one of those people could also, uh, function as a city engineer, and we will be interviewing them soon. I know it's been blocked on the calendar, but at the moment I can't remember when, but it's in the next week or two. Um, we had been, um, talking, uh, with an individual who is going to come in and provide some temporary engineering assistance um, to us. Uh, we had been talking to them prior to the pandemic really ramping up in this area. And, uh, this is somebody who's very familiar with our projects and our processes. And so when the stay-at-home order came, that, that conversation kind, kind of abruptly stopped and, and we've picked up that conversation. So we may be having in short order some, um, you know, additional, uh, pair of hands to help, um, on some of the engineering projects. And then other changes relative to staffing, uh, you'll see when we present the, um, the budget. But, um, I think it's important to consider, um, the staffing in the engineering side of Public Works. Also, when you see what we're anticipating on the, um, the capital improvement plan, because you'll see how the projects are gonna, um, ebb and flow in terms of design and construction. And, um, having a different balance than maybe we have had in the past between um, staff and consultants will allow us more flexibility with those ebbs and flows of, um, of, uh, activities, um, between, as I said, the design and the construction work. So, um, I think, I think that's everything I wanted to share. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Um, yeah, I think my main concern with staff was just overworking Justin and, and the other, the other engineers and techs and making sure that they have the support they need. Any questions for Carol on any of those reports? Seeing none. The first, uh, item of business, or is there any other staff report? Okay, the first item of business is ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero four dash zero two five. An ordinance approving a special use permit for two oh five North High Cross Road, OSF Healthcare Plan Case twenty-three ninety-nine SU twenty. And this was, uh, sent back to committee last week uh, because some council members had some ideas or concerns. Did anybody, um, did anybody went to discuss anything there? Do, should we have a motion first?
Anybody?
I'll make a motion, uh, that committee, uh, ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero four dash zero two five, and ordinance approving a special use permit for two oh five North High Cross Road, uh, with regards to the OSF Healthcare Center that's planned there, came from Plan Case two three nine nine, that's SU dash two zero, uh, be approved. He cuts to, uh, full council with recommendation for approval. I'm sorry.
Okay. And who seconded that?
Bill Colbrook.
Bill? Okay. So moved by Jared and seconded by Bill um, to forward to council with recommendation for approval. Is there any additional staff report or information on that?
I know I got an email of, you know, the, all of the legal stuff that we were talking about last week. So I don't really have any more questions.
Any other council members have any comments or questions?
Yeah. Yeah, I, uh, for the reasons Sharice and I have not communicated with each other, but we have both been communicated to by the same people. And I'm taking the same position as Sharice for that reason.
Okay. And sorry, Dennis and Mary Alice, I didn't see your hands up. Who is first?
Dennis can go first.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to say that, uh, first of all, I appreciate returning, um, this item to the Committee of the Whole, which is the appropriate place for items from Planning Commission to arrive at the city, uh, council for consideration. It gives us and the public an opportunity to have a chance to review us, uh, review this and get comments from the public if there are going to be any. And a little bit of discussion, uh, before, uh, working on it, making a decision automatically in the city council. So I appreciate that. Uh, well, okay, we didn't have that happen to us, but I appreciate the city council members uh, agreeing to send it to committee for review. And, uh, one of the things that, that came up is that, uh, we are, um, we're looking at this as a special, uh, use permit. And it's come to, to light that actually any kind of, uh, hospital, uh, clinic uh, function would have to receive some kind of a special use clinic in pretty much all the different zoning districts. So it's appropriate that, uh, you know, we review this. The, the Planning Commission didn't have any objection to this. And, uh, the only thing that they came up had to do with, uh, certain financial aspects of the agreement that we might, uh, that might relate to, uh, property taxes or whatever. But, uh, these things are moot at this point because they're up in the air. And actually, those kinds of concerns uh, should not really necessarily, uh, influence a decision about an appropriate um, acceptance or denial of a special use. But it did open up the concept of maybe it would be useful for the city council in the future. Maybe during the budgeting period, when we're looking at and reviewing fees and, um, and, uh, other kinds of aspects of the city, uh, city revenues to try to understand more tangibly how organizations like OSF uh, contribute to the actual real true needs of the city itself, and not even just the wider community. You know, the city, uh, the city's greatest, um, cost burden is, is, um, personnel. And the greatest, uh, recipients of that are, are, um, our public servants, the police department and the fire department. And if, uh, if we find that, um, a certain charitable organizations are, um, unable to support us directly for that, it would be useful to find out what ways they do support the community so that we feel that indeed they understand that the community that they live in is, um, and its health and its vigor is, uh, is very important to them as well as their, um, bottom line and their potential profit. So I just want to say that I'm looking always for larger organizations in the community to support the city in multiple ways. Um, whether it be, um, on the ground through, um, some certain fiscal aspects of the property that they're going to be occupying or some, uh, some way of contributing to the community and to the city itself in a very direct manner. So that's what I would like to say.
Okay, thanks. Mary Alice.
Um, yeah, so I called Lori today because I know that one of the topics of conversation, aside from property tax, was also the sidewalk and the connectivity um, across High Cross Road and across, um, Main Street, I believe is what it's called. So when I spoke to Lori, she had said that it's already part of our zoning, that a sidewalk would have to be built in front of the property. So in terms of having a sidewalk built continuously, that would be something that would be brought up perhaps later, but OSF would be required as part of the building process to actually put a sidewalk in front. And I believe Lori, I think you're still on here, but, um, I don't know if you had an opportunity to look at how that would connect to Aldi's, but I believe that sidewalk would start from the OSF property and then, uh, wrap around to Aldi's. And so that would be kind of a, a continuous segment. Would you be able to speak to that?
Sure. And Lily can correct any of my inaccuracies if she pulls up the map perhaps. Um, but yes, so the sidewalk that would be required as part of our subdivision ordinance would be one that would connect uh, in a north-south orientation, and it would, um, connect the Aldi property to the south, all the way along the, the OSF property, and it would then connect to the sidewalk that already exists to the north. So the condition that is, um, in the ordinance that has to do with a sidewalk is related only to a connection piece at the intersection, which is off-site. So the, um, the sidewalk that is required by code is considered, um, adjacent to the site or on the site to make that, to make those connections.
So piece by piece, we hopefully will eventually have a completely connected sidewalk in that area.
Yes, and it would, um, it would wrap around because right now it wraps around, uh, south of Aldi and then around the curve. It just doesn't connect to the crosswalks for High Cross or for University.
Okay, all right. Uh, my other statement was that I am, thank you Lori, I appreciate the input. Uh, I'm, I'm very happy to see that OSF is interested in building this facility in this area. I think that it will offer healthcare services to an area that doesn't really have a lot of access. A lot of the healthcare services have been moved over to Windsor, uh, so south of Urbana, both in Champaign and in Urbana. Um, and then we have the two hospitals, but there's nothing really over there on the, uh, northeast portion of Urbana. So for that reason, I'm in support of this.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else have comments? Um, I think I just, to clarify the sidewalk issue, um, to connect to the intersection, it has to go over a pretty large ditch. And, um, the memo said that a box culvert would be required. And what was the estimate? Hundred fifty thousand or fifty thousand? Or something like that. What, do you remember?
A hundred and twenty.
Hundred twenty thousand. So a pretty expensive box culvert installation to get across that ditch. So I hope we can keep exploring ways to fund that. Maybe look at special assessments, although special assessments probably, it's, it's a little bit too big of a hammer for a small, a smaller project like that. But, um, maybe with that in mind, we could get the negotiations going a little bit and seeing what people could do. Uh, Bill Colbrook, you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. Thanks. Um, so I used to live in, uh, Berenger Commons, uh, not too long ago. Uh, we owned a, uh, well, we owned a property, uh, right along that stretch along High Cross Road. And, um, you know, having, uh, teenagers who, you know, want, on, on occasion want to go shopping, you know, over at Walmart or, or go to other places in town. Uh, just as a citizen, it was disappointing for me that there was not a connecting sidewalk uh, from, from the existing one behind the condos along High Cross. And then, of course, it gets to the Aldi property there at the curve. There's no, there's no, uh, improved crosswalk that, that, that crosses University to the south to get to, you know, the newly installed, um, you know, trail, which is such an asset, you know, to that section of town to begin with. So of course, I'm, you know, in complete support of, you know, of not only the sidewalk, you know, by code because of, you know, potential build by OSF, but also, uh, making sure that we, we, um, get the crosswalk built across University Avenue, uh, so we can connect north and south uh, down to the, uh, to the trail. I believe it's, it's, if nothing else, it's a safety issue for the pedestrians in that side of town. So it's just kind of personal to me because, uh, I always worried about my, my kids leaving the house and having to go on foot. Uh, you know, there's, there's, um, speeds out there, you know, get kind of high and, uh, and drivers typically don't expect pedestrians to be crossing the road. So I think a crosswalk, uh, being built there, if nothing else, is great for safety for the citizens of Urbana.
Okay, thank you. And I actually, I was out there on the trail, um, yesterday, I think it was. Um, and noticed that you really do, it's a good idea, just even if you're on the trail there, to use the crossing button. Because there's, if you're going east, there's two right turn lanes that go, uh, south on High Cross, and you don't automatically think to look to the second right turn lane, even though there might not be anybody in the first one. So it looks like this person in the second right turn lane is going to go straight, but then they'll turn in front of you or, or turn into you or something. So um, when, when people are using that, that, um, trail, be sure to use the button to make sure you get a signal there. Um, okay. Saying no more comments.
One other thing too as well, I'm sorry. Um, I, I just wanted the, the council to, to know that, um, I sent an email to, um, the Berenger Homeowners Association, the emails that were listed on their website asking if they had input. And, uh, as of today, uh, I have not received anything back. That, that's been out for about probably two or three weeks now. I can't remember the exact date. But I specifically solicited whatever input they would have, uh, from a homeowners association perspective on the crosswalk, um, and the, uh, and the OSF, um, project, and I haven't received anything back, unfortunately.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to, uh, send ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero four dash zero two five to the full city council with a recommendation for approval. Um, if there's any more, no more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that motion carries. Next up is Resolution number twenty twenty dash zero five. Next up is resolution number 2020-05-021R, a resolution authorizing acceptance of an Illinois Arts Council Agency grant for youth employment project for the arts and culture program, community development.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rachel, excuse me?
Hi, Rachel.
Oh, hi. My name is Rachel Storm. Many of you know me as the arts and culture coordinator for the city. I'm happy to join you this evening with some good news, which is that we received the summer youth employment in the arts grant through Illinois Arts Council. We were awarded $3,515 to fully support two high school age student interns that would work with us over the summer. Their role would be to provide general administrative support and assistance in kind of online campaigns, marketing, social media, tracking engagement, data entry and certain types of our programs and, and general programmatic initiatives that we have going on. This internship has been one that we've actually been able to provide a number of years in a row now. So we're very delighted to have received this grant now a number of years. In each inference, we've had a lot of great experiences with our interns and we're able to offer high school students an opportunity, not simply to work with a local arts agency, but to also get some, some local government experience as well. So it's been a really good experience for them. We are excited to be able to carry on this tradition, but even last summer, you might recall that we had two interns as well. So they were able to work on projects such as our summer movie nights, our Art at the Market series, our Young Artist Studio series, and the newer downtown get down that we had last summer. As we all are very aware, COVID-19 is really changing how we're doing work at the moment. And with working from home and working remotely in accordance with public health guidelines, we are also prepared to shift work responsibilities. A lot of what we had them doing last year, they'll be able to do again. So we're very excited about that and we've been in good communication with the Arts Council about the current environment and kind of maintaining this grant and we're looking very forward to it. We, this grant fund has already been awarded to the city, but of course it's necessary to adopt this resolution, signifying formal acceptance by city council and outlining terms. I want to identify to you that the grant, again, is at an amount of 3,515. We have a copy of the grant agreement attached and I want to emphasize that the funds received by this grant will be used specifically to support two high school student interns hired to work over the summer. It will cover their wages and FICA. The grant agreement requires that the expenditure take place between May 15th and September 15th. And all of our matching funds will actually be entirely covered by existing budgeted arts and culture programming expenditures. In this case, we really want to encourage you to approve the attached resolution and authorizing acceptance of this grant through the Illinois Arts Council for the arts and culture program.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Rachel?
I'd like to make a motion if I could, Bill.
I think Mary Alice had her hand up.
I was going to make a motion, but Jared, if you want to make one, go for it.
I made the last one, go ahead.
All right, I will move resolution number 2020-05-021R, resolution authorizing acceptance of an Illinois Arts Council Agency grant for, sorry?
Summer Youth Employment Grant.
Thank you. A summer youth employment grant for the arts and culture program with a recommendation for approval to city council.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Jared. Any discussion?
I just wanted to say something quickly, if that's okay, Bill. Um, I have been, it's been really nice to see all the hard work that the city staff have been doing during this COVID time. I've seen a lot of different videos done by Jason, done by Bridget. I've seen a lot of social media going on and I'm really excited to see what kind of innovative stuff the arts and cultures program is going to be doing right now. Because I think that that will show us what we can do in addition, once we get back to having summer festivals and having, you know, arts in the farmer's ark and so forth. So I think this is a great opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your support of the arts and culture program.
Next is ordinance number 2020-05-026. An ordinance approving an amendment to redevelop to a redevelopment agreement by and between the city of Urbana, Champaign County, Illinois, that's us, and Green Street Realty of Illinois. First Amendment, 200 block of South Vine Street and 300 block of East Green Street, Community Development, Brandon.
Good evening. I'm Brandon Boyes, Economic Development Manager. The ordinance before council tonight is, would extend the completion date of the redevelopment agreement with Green Street Realty by a period of four months, resulting in a project completion date of May 1st, 2021. This project will result in a 42-unit, two and three-story townhome project on the 200 Vine block of South Vine Street, which is the block north of the city building. And it will be the first new multifamily housing constructed in the downtown in over 15 years. Green Street Realty has reported an increase in total project cost to 8.05 million, and that includes the use of MAC, MAC siding, a pre-painted steel siding product in place of EFIS, exterior insulation finishing system siding. This substitution does not apply to any of the brick exterior in the original designs that were approved as part of the redevelopment agreement and therefore remains substantially in accordance with the preliminary project design and the redevelopment agreement. Incentives provided to the developer under the redevelopment agreement would remain unchanged as well. Again, the ordinance would only authorize a pen and ink amendment by the mayor to literally cross out the completion date that's currently in the agreement and write in May 1st, 2021. The current agreement is the end of this calendar year. Staff is recommending the approval of the amendment to the redevelopment agreement. The four-month extension is, is necessary to complete the project financing and to ensure that the developer has a reasonable opportunity to complete the project in the event of any slowdown of work as a result of the COVID pandemic. Chris Saunders of Green Street Realty is, is here on the call this evening and I'd like to give him an opportunity to make a comment as well.
Yeah, thanks, Brandon. I think you kind of covered it. Just wanted to give everybody just kind of a quick update on the project. If you've been by it recently, the last month, six weeks or so, things are really starting to move on our end. It's been kind of a long and painful process. As, as we knew when we, when we bought this project, we knew there was quite a bit of site utility work that needed to be moved to, to get the project to the point where we could develop it as we wanted. Some of those, some of those utility lines that run on that project feed not only the city building, but also the courthouses and a lot of downtown type projects. So we, we got a lot of that utility work going in 2019. We paid over $200,000 to Amrin, Comcast, AT&amp;T to do their work. Of course, we were on their timelines. When you, when you pay for those utility movements, they don't just run out and immediately you know, move the utilities for you. So we were kind of on their schedules, which slowed us down a little bit and got us into the winter months. Making, making some of our work kind of hard to, hard to get done. We've, we've kind of worked real hard on this project to find a lender, a local lender that was willing to do the project with us. And, and some of those difficulties, there's really a couple. One of the difficulties is just the loan size. This ended up being a little bit bigger project than we had anticipated. We kind of anticipated between five and $6 million to complete the project and, and we really are up to almost 8 million. And that, that's, that we're seeing across the board. Construction costs have just continued to rise over the last two years. Things that were costing us, you know, two years ago might have been a five or $6 million project are, you know, now ballooning up 25, 30% more. So the good news is we were able to kind of get this budget to a point where we could, you know, we felt good with it to keep the, the materials, like Brandon said, that, you know, the brick and the look of the, the buildings that we wanted. We were able to substitute a siding that has just a slight savings for us, but this is the MAC siding over the EFIS. And, and, and really had MAC even been a siding option when we first started about looking at this project back in 19 that we were aware of, we would have, we would have had this in the original request. We are using it now on several different projects. I've always felt that it's superior to EFIS. EFIS typically has some, some issues sometimes with water penetration, mold, things like that behind it. So we like, like the MAC siding. But one of the issues we've had with lenders is, like I said, finding a lender that's got the, the ability to finance this from a lending capacity. A lot of the local lenders, smaller banks here that we have been working with have a lending capacity that's a lot less than $6 million for a borrower. So we are kind of down to, you know, down to the bank that we feel comfortable with and, and their request and, and, you know, had this COVID-19 stuff not happened, I think we, we felt pretty good that we'd still complete the project by the end of the calendar year. But the COVID stuff popped up in, in mid-March and, and these lenders, including our lender, really immediately shifted their attention to the PPP programs, payroll protection programs and, and things like that and dealing with obviously crises with some of their, the borrowers that might have businesses that are closed. So that put a, a little delay in this. We did get the appraisal back, which was one of the items that we were waiting for, but the bank had requested that we extend this project to, you know, a little bit longer into 2021 to give us time in case there are shutdowns or slowdowns or anything that's unexpected. Obviously, this is an unprecedented time as far as being in a position where you're doing new construction projects. We have about $70 million worth of projects that were in final loan approval stages, including this one and another large project on University Avenue in Urbana, our two Urbana projects. And obviously, banks have every reason right now to, to kind of pull back and, and be concerned when, when things are locked down, businesses shut, you know, people are losing jobs. So to keep this together, we feel really, you know, really good about that. And obviously, we, we, we care about the project and getting it to the finish line, but these four months buy that time to, to get us there. And if you look at our timeline, you'll see that really a lot of this project will be all the way out of the ground and completely up by the end of the calendar year. This buys us some additional time to, you know, to get it done, get it done right. Also doesn't have us delivering the project January 1, which is not an ideal time, you know, for residents that are going to potentially move into a project like this and development like this. They're not going to typically move in the winter months. So it gets us on a better, a better timeline and obviously gets the most important thing accomplished, which is the bank's final blessing, which we need to get our, our financing. That's the kind of last contingency item we have with, with our lender. And we will have, you know, right now, our schedule, if you, we have footings and foundations in on several buildings. We will be going vertical here towards the end of this month. So these buildings will go up awfully quick. Really, you know, to obviously transform that entire, that entire block awfully quick. So that's kind of a little bit of an update from, from the construction side and why we're making this request. But again, we, we remain excited. We remain optimistic, like, you know, our group is doing, like I said, $70 million of projects in this market in addition to, you know, 50 or 60 or 70 million that we're completing for this August despite, you know, the, the uncertain times right now. So that's our request. And I think Brandon, you know, summarized it a little bit, but I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Okay, uh, okay, thanks. Charisse, I think you had your hand up first.
Yes, um, this is for Mr. Saunders. What was the original completion date?
Original completion date was 12/31/20 was our goal. Really, our initial goal was to try to deliver these in August of 20, you know, but like I said, we had some additional things. Not only have we had, you know, easements that we've dealt with on this project, we've also found, you know, easements that aren't easements that were not recorded in title work, such as AT&amp;T's line that runs, we believed the easements that were recorded in the title work showed they ended at the middle alley that runs north-south and they went to the east towards Urbana Street. Well, we found that AT&amp;T actually has a unrecorded easement that runs underneath the ground all the way to Vine Street, right smack in the middle of our building and feeds the county courthouse. And they, they do not want us to build over this easement. So there's just been a lot of challenges of things that, you know, even in the most amount of due diligence to find easements that are unrecorded is, is kind of a big blow when we find it out, you know, just a month or so ago. So we're working through things, feel very confident in in our execution and our ability to get this project done and, you know, excited about it. But obviously, we have to have a lending institution as our partner on this. They're going to be lending about a $6.4 million loan. And we currently, right now, are spending our own, you know, my own cash of 1.6 million on the front end of this. We've spent about a million dollars to date.
Okay, so my understanding then is that what's pushed back your completion date is utilities issues where they were under the ground. Is that one?
Yeah, and the timeframe it takes those, those, those groups to move there, you know, we paid for, you know, utilities to be moved back in late 2019 and all the utilities still are not relocated and we're, you know, in May of 20. So just to give you an idea, utility companies, even after getting agreements made with them and new easements and paying them 200-plus thousand dollars are not rushing right out to move those. Need a lot of those items move before we can, you know, substantially continue certain parts of the project.
Okay, and the other part, the other problem is, was the lending. You getting the money together or are you getting the loan?
The loan, a lot of the banks were concerned about the, you know, the location, to be quite frank. Just the fact that there hasn't been construction in downtown Urbana in 15 years and the concern that will we be able to get the type of rents we're going to get? You know, it was a highly risky project as far as some banks were concerned locally and a large loan amount. However, we still feel very strong about that. We, we were able to get, get lenders that we have good relationships with to do this, but this is their one, one request to be able to get a little more time. So we're not going to be in default of a development agreement on timing. And that's really the only, only reason we're doing that, asking for that time.
So you'll be borrowing approximately $6 million?
6.4 million, yes. It's an $8 million project. We're putting in 1.6 of our own, you know, own cash into the deal.
Okay, and and so, but the, the bank issue is that's taken care of as well?
Pending this approval, yeah. I don't think the bank's going to, they're going to approve the loan if they feel like the construction wouldn't get done within the timeline of the development agreement. So yeah, assuming that we approve this, the bank will, 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 will do the loan. That's correct.
Okay, my other question is you couldn't come to us earlier about this?
Well, one, I didn't predict a pandemic. Two, I wouldn't need to if we hadn't had the middle of March. And I have been in constant communication with, with the city, you know, kind of giving them updates on where things were at. And we've been working on the project. We demolished the, you know, the building that was there. We paid for site utility, picked up a permit. We had the alley vacated in our favor. We did all the things we, we could do. We're simply talking about a four, you know, four-month delay, which delays in construction projects are not uncommon. And we're, we're asking, you know, four-month delay and we've got an $8 million project. So we're taking a significant risk in a very unknown time. This is not something I take lightly. And it's not something that I hope the city takes lightly because this is a lot of projects that are going all over the country that will not happen because of this and banks will stop. And this is a big deal to Urbana. And I'm willing to, to take the risk and take the challenge to find out what, what may happen. And, and I don't have a crystal ball to tell you this will work out great, but I, I feel confident that we'll eventually get through this pandemic and, and this will be an outstanding project and a boost to, you know, to the downtown area like we all want it to be.
Thank you.
Okay, Mary Alice?
So Charisse asked some of my questions, but I just want to confirm your $8 million project. Does that include or not include the land?
Includes a $1 price tag on the land.
Okay, so.
And one of the questions before was about permit costs. And obviously, anybody that knows construction is you don't include soft costs in your permit application. Soft costs make up a considerable amount of any project. Design architect fees, utility connection fees, GC contractor fees, supervision fees. Those are always peeled out of it when you put in a construction permit. So it's not, you're not going to typically see an $8 million total project and an $8 million permit because you typically wouldn't include those items.
Gotcha, gotcha. So there's been a little bit of discussions in the, in the menu, sorry, the memo. And also here tonight about the change in the siding. Do you know what kind of siding was used on the Lincoln in Nevada? Do you know what kind of siding was used on the Lincoln in Nevada project?
Yeah, I do. Cause I built it. Um, yeah, brick and we used a hardy board material on that, on that project. In this particular project, we had planned originally to use EPIS and a, and a, and a project, a product similar to this MAC siding on the back of the project. You remember the back of the project on Vine Street shows kind of the, the horizontal siding. So really, the only change is Brandon mentioned, there's really no change to the Urbana side. That's still all the brick like it was in the two-story. We're talking about the three-story section of EPIS that we showed on the Vine Street side, which would be from floor two to three. So that is the only, you know, really real substantial change. And we, and we, we liked the product. And to give you some perspective too, when I say we were able to find some savings going this route, the savings were obviously important, but the savings weren't substantial. This is still $20 a square foot product. You know, a vinyl siding might run you $6 a square foot. So this is a, this is an expensive product. EPIS, we try to keep EPIS off of projects as much as possible, just because it typically has issues in our climate for a lot of reasons. And we've liked this MAC, we, we presented this MAC siding to the city maybe even five or six months ago, kind of explaining that we thought it was a better choice. And then I think we all agreed it was still substantially similar to what, what we were, we were looking to do on the project and really not a, not, you know, and that's why it's not part of this, this approval tonight.
So I just want to be clear on, when you say Urbana, you're talking about Urbana Street, right?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. So I, I just want to be clear because, you know, we are the city of Urbana.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Urbana Street. I believe that's the street that runs on the backside. The two-story, the two-story buildings on the front facades are all going to be brick, all two stories of those. So those don't change.
Okay.
We're only talking about the front on, you know, wrapping from mid-Green Street around Divine and all the way over to, what is it Elm? I'm not sure what street that is that runs, it's Green and Elm maybe?
Yeah, it's Elm.
That, that's top section on the three-story buildings would be replaced from EPIS to this MAC siding.
So the first two floors on, on Vine Street are going to be brick?
The brick is unchanged in the project. $484,000 worth of brick is unchanged.
Okay. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to visualize. If I, if I visualize the building, I'm trying to figure out, because it's been a while since we looked at the schematics on, on Vine Street, which is probably going to be the, the side that is going to be most visible to the public. Can you just briefly describe for me what those floors will look like on the exterior?
If, if I could share the screen, I could show an image while Chris is talking. Sorry to interrupt, but if I could share my screen, I can share an image while Chris is talking.
Yeah, you should be able to.
Okay. I'm, is it, it's not working right now?
No.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, it's coming. There you go.
Got it. Okay.
So there's a side-by-side. On the left is the exhibit that was included in the memo that is mostly the revised images and the right is from the, what's included in the development agreement. This is actually a slide presentation, but it's the same image. So if you look at that top left image, you can see that it's, it's the same image effectively as, as, but the only thing that's changed is what was swapped out. So Chris, you can.
Yeah, that's the material changes on the backside, the two-story versions, the, the rendering right below that. Nothing's changed. In the back of the building, we never really specified what horizontal siding we were going to use. So this is very similar to what we had in mind. So really that doesn't change. We're really only talking about the top third floor of the Vine Street slash Green Street Elm kind of side that wraps around to the middle of the project. This is basically two U's. You know, there's, there's entries at the middle of Elm and middle of Green to get into these. And they're basically two U-shaped. There's a two-story U-shaped on the Urbana side. And there's a three-story U-shaped on the, the Vine Street side.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Dennis?
Yes, thanks very much. Yeah. And Chris, thank you for, for coming tonight and discussing the project. You know, in some respects, the human neighborhood, which I represent and I live in is sort of cautiously, cautiously anticipating a change in our community based on the density and the large appearance of the buildings that are being discussed. But, you know, we do realize that the city council is, supports the development of Vine Street and greater density in the downtown. So we really appreciate your interest in this property. I don't have that much to say really or against the idea of giving you more time. I'd rather see the project come to fruition in a quality manner than to, to be hurried. So I don't have a problem necessarily with the time thing. My real concern that I want to discuss with you is the building material itself. I did go out to your project on Healy Street to look at the siding early this morning. And I found that it reminded me more of typical student housing campus look than the downtown, perhaps professional residence quality that I really expected of you for this project. And so I do have a concern about how, how the interior court and the, the cornice, the cornice effect of the buildings facing Vine Street and all around this, all around the structure will change. The top story is going to be completely clad in this new material that's going to be, it reminds me of really bad the surface structure that, that I would see on, on factories or, you know, warehousing. It reminds me sort of a warehousing style material. It's all metal rather than a fiber board or a hardy board, which I think could be so much more appropriate for the facade. And I think that it doesn't necessarily enhance the interior. If you are thinking of these as higher-end apartments, the quality, I think, would be of a higher standard to encourage more people to be of a professional nature to be living here in this apartment complex. If it didn't look so much like student housing in the courtyard. Now, these are, you know, of course, these are your choices, except for you have come to us now with a change in the quality of the materials. And I'm not really demeaning the fact that they might be a little bit cheaper. What I'm looking at really as, as a person who appreciates architecture generally and has studied it very specifically in some communities here and in Europe. I am sort of concerned, to be honest, about how them, how the tactile appearance of the building is changing. And I think is sort of being somewhat degraded by these metal stripes that are going to be vertical on the facade. And even if you were to go ahead with this, which I guess is perhaps your ability by right unless we decide to have a question about this and require some kind of maybe a longer discussion about the, the quality of the materials that you're proposing to use on this project, which seemed to have changed. Partly, I'm concerned about the coloration that you're, you're going to pick. And could you explain to me what originally the color, the color tone was for the original? It's not hardy board, but you called it a different kind of material. I don't remember the name of it.
MAC.
A MAC. Well, that's what we're going to now. Isn't that, aren't we going to MAC?
So, and Dennis, yeah, let me, let me go ahead and.
So it was, it looked like a kind of a tan brown or something like that was at the top, which is a light color. And now it looks like you're going to a kind of a dark gray, which I think is like sort of rather depressing generally in the effect. And it certainly darkens and makes even, even more solid looking, these buildings. I kind of like the idea that the lighter color kind of gives them a lift at the top, which is, I think, an appropriate and perhaps beneficial appearance. And I think if you, if you, if you go to a dark color at the top story, this building is going to have a hard and kind of hunkering down appearance on the street. And I think it would be ill-advised.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, but I, I'm going to, I, I'm looking at the, the agenda for tonight and I certainly don't see this as part of the agenda. We're here to.
You are changing, you are asking for a continuance based on.
Well, you're asking me to stop the project then, because that's what I'll have to do. And, and then we'll, we'll have to see if we can continue to get a loan on it because we're in a, you know, we're in a time period where there's a chance that we won't be able to. And this will be something we talk about again, that this project doesn't get complete.
Well, then let me just say that.
I'm, you know, I'm the developer on this, and this is within my rights to, to have these changes and, and you're, you know, that's, I, I appreciate your input. In fact, I took a lot of your input in this design where we came up with the two-story on Urbana side and the three-story on the, you know, the brick and things like that. But
I'm not, okay.
It's my money.
Let's say that you proceed with this. I know that you can probably custom order the color. Is that correct?
Or does it only. These colors though, this, this, there's multiple colors and we've got a color in mind. Yes.
All right. Well, I would like you to try to match as close as possible, the, the color that you've originally presented to us.
Okay.
All right.
Yep. Thank you.
I hope this doesn't go into dark gray or some, some brown color.
We'll make sure it looks wonderful. It's going to look great. It's going to look a lot better. That's, on that lot right now. I can, I can assure you of that.
I bet it will, but I, can you commit to making it a color that matches the original color tonage, tonalities that you presented to us like two and a half years, about two years ago? I mean, has, has the concept changed?
Approved in 19, I believe. So sure, certainly wasn't two years ago, but.
It seems like really a long time ago.
It certainly does. This is kind of the same stuff all over again typically. So yeah, no, this is not what the discussion is about tonight.
Lighter color at the top.
Yep. Got it. Thank you. Noted.
You very much.
Any other questions from council? I guess I had one. You know, in our agreement, one of the conditions precedent to to the agreement was the, was the ability to finance it. So I'm just kind of curious why that wasn't kind of written in stone before we closed on the property.
I mean, we haven't not got financing yet.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we haven't not got financing yet. So, you know, that's.
The developer signed a personal guarantee to complete the project.
Okay. So if, if this, if we, if we decided against this, what would the consequence be? I mean, Chris says he'd have to stop the project, but if he's already guaranteed it, what, what would be the consequences?
Well, you'd be stopping the project, not me. So I'd be doing my part. That would be a different scenario, I think. But we'd have to legally find out what the options are at that point. If that's what you're inferring to, that you guys would stop the project.
Right. I mean, just what if we left the agreement the way it was?
We, we. I mean, like in general, if a project runs long and there's a few, there's some very good reasons for that between the utilities and now the uncertainty around how COVID will, COVID will impact site work. What, what would happen is the city could call the developer in default. But normally we go into a process where we ask the developer to cure the default and that normally just means that they're given a reasonable amount of time to complete it. And I, I would say that as staff, we really didn't know how this situation as it unfolds was going to impact our biggest projects. And we're very fortunate that not only is, is Chris moving forward on this project, he's also moving forward at 1007 West University, gathers moving forward. And the hotel, which is in a much earlier design phase, is also moving forward at this time. So given the, the constraints that we're facing in this market, and also Chris spoke a little about some of the challenges he's faced in terms of skepticism from lenders and including local lenders about the viability of, of this project, which is called out directly in our downtown plan. And I, I do want to reiterate the, the duration of time we've worked on this because there was an RFP issued in 2011 for a seven-story mixed use was what came back, a seven-story building that filled the site. And then again, in 2015, a RFP was issued with the help of an outside real estate broker. And we recruited developers from out of state, Indiana in particular. And that was resulting a five-story apartment. Both of those, you know, were pushed back again, against by the neighborhood. So when we, and they weren't financially viable either. So when we came around to this third site or this third opportunity in 2018, the city called for a town home project and we only received two proposals that, that really met the description. So that there's a long lead up to, you know, where, where we find ourselves now.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, you know, when we're given an option of voting yes or no, it's just nice to know what would happen with each option.
Oh, certainly. Yeah. It, it is definitely more complicated than just a yes, no vote. But in this instance, the, the yes vote is what satisfies the lender and allows the project to move forward. And a no vote puts us into a state of uncertainty that as you've just heard, gives everyone involved a great deal of pause.
Yeah. I'm sure we all want to go forward when we want to be a quality project. Any other comments or questions from council? Bill and then the mayor.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I remember not too long ago, you know, what that block looked like, you know, with the oil change business there and kind of, you know, just in general, how that, that whole block looked. I think it's exciting that there's a development, you know, that's going in there, that's going to kind of spruce up the neighborhood. I don't think that a four-month extension is, is that, you know, outrageous. I, I think it's, you know, within the scope of reasonableness. And I think it's something that, that I can support in order to allow the project to go forward. And then just in the last comment, I didn't know anything about MAC siding until this came up. And of course, I went to the wonderful world of Google and, and brought up some images. And frankly, the images that I saw, you know, on the returns for, for MAC siding, although I, you know, it's not particularly my style. I thought, you know, the images that really shown were quite attractive and frankly, having seen those images, I think there's probably a couple of houses out in this neighborhood that may be using that. Just from the, what are the renderings that I saw on, on the internet? Frankly, there was a house that was very modern. This, I, I consider it modern. I'm not an expert in architecture, but this is just kind of down the block from, from me. And it had this very interesting exterior and I could not put my finger on what it was. And now that I've seen the images on the internet, it sure does look like MAC siding to me. And, and I considered it an attractive residential building, you know, being built. So you know, I'm, I'm willing to, you know, throw a little confidence the developer's way and, and trust their judgment and their professional expertise and, and making an attractive building, you know, downtown Urbana.
Okay. Thanks. Mayor Marlon, did you have something?
Let the other council members speak first and I'll follow.
Mary Alice?
I actually was just going to make a motion. So if there's other questions, just so if we're going to have a discussion, I thought it might be good to have a motion, but it's.
Go ahead with the motion.
Okay. I will move ordinance number 202005026, an ordinance approving an amendment to redevelopment agreement by and between the city of Urbana, Champaign, Illinois. Sorry. City of Urbana, Champaign County, Illinois and Green Street Realty, Illinois, First Amendment of the 200 block of South Vine Street and 300 block of East Green Street to city council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice and second by Charisse. Eric, did you have some discussion?
I just want to say briefly, Chris, thank you for being willing to continue to invest your money, your company's future in our future. And I appreciate that.
Eric, thank you. I appreciate you telling me that. That, that means a lot. It's a very difficult time right now. And I hope, you know, I think I'm taking a positive outlook on this and investing hundreds of millions of dollars in Champaign-Urbana, not laying off employees and keeping my businesses running. And we're doing everything we can do. We got a lot of great people behind the scenes and we are so excited to do this, you know, $8 million project on Vine Street and a $15 million project where Nero Jeros was at. And, you know, we're, we're, we're excited about all this stuff still. And even though there's a lot more challenges than there has been in the past. Even though there's a lot more challenges than there has been in the past, um, our optimism is still uh. Still there and we're, we're excited to be part of uh. Anything to do with Urbana. As you know, I am a resident of Urbana and. It's important to me, um, you know, to, to do this project and see it all the way through. Nobody wants to look better than I do, trust me.
I, I happen to be very stable, because I'm a university retiree. But if I were in business like yours, I probably wouldn't be sleeping nights. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mayor Marlin?
I just wanted to follow up a bit on what Brandon said. Um, he, as he mentioned, this has been a ten year journey to get a project for this site. And staff has put in hundreds of hours to get us to this point, and I've put in a lot of hours as well. And one of the first things um we did when we got the bid. And it um. We uh interviewed the uh candidates and when we sat down with Chris and his team, we made it very, very clear that this project was incredibly important. Number one, because it's the first new construction in, well, now it's probably fifteen or sixteen years in downtown Urbana. And it really had to look good. It had to be high quality and a lot of people would be really watching it and. And it's pioneering for us, because for so many years, nobody was investing in downtown Urbana. In terms of residential construction or new construction period. So this was a breakthrough for us and it wasn't an accident and I appreciate. Green Streets and Chris's um willingness to. To invest in Urbana and to be confident about our future and um. I look forward to the completion of this project and I don't think anyone. Can fully appreciate, well, everyone fully appreciates what we're going through here, but, but the uncertainty that the pandemic has thrown into the business community is just. Um, and into people's lives. You know, is, is incalculable. So the fact that these projects are continuing, as far as we know. This one, of course, and then the other two is, is um, I think a testament to. People's faith in our city and faith in that will hold up our end of the bargain. So, thank you. And I appreciate it and we look forward to. A ribbon cutting next door.
Thank you. Uh, Dennis?
Yeah, I just want to say that, of course, I, I do appreciate the fact that uh this is going to be a significant new um. Building that in our near downtown area. Uh, I just want it to be the highest quality that we can afford and achieve. And uh, you know, I'm interested in aesthetics. And I have concerns about um the effect of color on the spatial representation of a building and that's so large in our downtown. I don't want it to look like a dark. Uh, fortress. I want it to have a feeling that it's a. That there, there, there would be a wonderful place to live and not have the courtyard. Uh, look to be like a depressing area. And I think gray. Uh, if, if the major color of the interior is going to be gray, I don't see that as being. Family exciting or child, child exciting or even um. Well, I don't know. I would say really consider it. I'm not, but I, but I agree to the extension of time. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, if not, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you all very much and thank you, Chris.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Have a great night.
You too.
Uh. Next on the agenda. Is ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero five dash zero two seven. An ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter Three, Section Three Forty Three. Increasing number of Class C liquor licenses for Mama Tried LLC DBA doing business as the Rose Bowl. Uh, Mayor Marlin?
Yes, um, we had a request from Charlie Harris and Martin Stromberg a few weeks ago to change their liquor license. Their current license is a um. Class uh A license, which was your typical bar license, and they asked to change it to Class C, which is packaged sales. Um, the Rose Bowl, like many of the downtown, well, many of the businesses in Urbana. When the stay at home order hit and the bars and restaurants were closed, um, people had to pivot very quickly. So Rose Bowl, like a number of the other bars. Began selling packaged liquor and then they've actually got a little bodega going too out of their. Um, north side of the building and this request um is in direct. Uh, response to the way they're doing business today. So it will reduce the number of Class A licenses in Urbana from eleven to ten. And increase the Class C license from twenty two to twenty three. Um, we are waiving the, normally if people want to change a liquor license category, we, there's a fee attached to that. We're waiving that fee. And um, this license will be in effect until the new um. Fiscal year, which is July first. So they will um have the option of. Staying at this in July or going back to their original, depending on what. You know, what the circumstances are at the time.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Mayor Marlin?
I'll make a motion if you take one, Bill.
Okay, go ahead, Jared.
I'd like to move ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero five dash zero two seven, an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code Chapter Three, Section Three Dash Forty Three. Increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses for Mama Tried LLC DBA. The Rose Bowl Tavern at one oh six North Ray Street, rebound Lloyd, be sent to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
I'd like to second that one. It's a good downtown business.
What was that?
I would like to second that. It's a wonderful downtown business.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, moved by Jared and seconded by Dennis. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
Bill, I have one more thing.
Okay, Diane?
Um, before you adjourn, I just wanted to uh thank city staff and the public for making the first farmer's market of the season a great success. We uh had. About a thousand customers coming to the market, uh, one hundred percent compliance with our request to wear face coverings. Um, I think the market worked very well in terms of logistics. We did get some feedback about flow through it and we'll be taking that into account, but. For first, first one out of the gate, it was very successful and um. We were able to have a. Food only plus soap and face max um. Vendors there selling items and I think it meant a lot to the public and based on the. Very, very positive feedback I got from both vendors and customers, I think people were glad to see it. So a thousand people for the first week is pretty darn good and I. People, people were extremely cooperative in terms of physical distancing, um. Being patient, following the public health guidelines that we had put into place. So I want to thank everyone. For making it a success.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Bill.
Have a great week, everybody.